Under God, indivisible.
Hallelujah.
Well, good evening, and I guess we can say truly good evening since it's been dark for a while again. But just a reminder as we get our meeting started today of our vision is inspiring all learners to be engaged and successful. Our mission to provide an enriching environment to meet the needs of all learners and then our core values of respect, integrity, students first and excellence. So as we go through the night and as we go through our agenda, please be very mindful of that as we do this. Like to thank Kylie for filming tonight. Maybe we don't always give her credit, but she's here a lot of nights. Kylie Scov giving filming this for us, has given a lot of her time. So thank you Kylie. All the meeting to order. Looks like we have a quorum easily. We need a motion to approve the agenda and no changes currently. Thank. I'll say we have a motion in a second. And any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. No hearing of delegates. And we're going to move right into the best dressed group we have here tonight, the most professional dressed group we have tonight. Our local, our current Algonquin FFA members just recently returned from the National Convention and going to give us an update for that.
Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity to travel to Indianapolis and then to report back to those of what we saw, what we did, and more, bringing back to our community of joint moving forward. We traveled to Indianapolis with Gretchen Terrell, Esteban Delson, and Delsen at Delsen. This was about a 12-hour trip, and so it was something that you kind of forget about how kind of long that can be, but by the time you get out there, it's a lot of fun. We left Tuesday morning and returned about 4:00 a.m. on Saturday, October 30th. So I'm going to turn it over to the students now, then I'll wrap it up with them.
Our first tour when we got out to Indianapolis was the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. We had an opportunity to take a lap around the track, and it's a two-and-a-half mile track right outside Indianapolis. And we got to climb in a car when we got into the museum. Each of the, one thing to learn was each of the turns of the track is banked exactly nine degrees, 12 minutes, and it's the exact same dimensions as it was when it opened in 1909. We got the opportunity to stand by the Art of Bricks and kiss the bricks, which is a really cool opportunity because that's a really famous site if you watch any racing. And we also got to tour the museum and check out all the cool cars they had in there from the history of the track and cars that had won at the track and see the trophy they had in there too, and just learn more about that. It was a really awesome experience because I love racing. And then after that, we headed to the convention.
Before you leave, can you give us your name?
Oh, I'm Hunter Todes. I'm a senior here at Algonquin.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Haley Buscher. I'm a freshman. And at the opening session at the convention, they set, they featured Courtney P. Hopch as their main speaker. Some of her key points were that the only person that has to believe in you is yourself. Never like just walk out. Keep your head held high all the time. She also said to make your message, don't like forgive for your mistakes, just learn from them. She also was saying that you shouldn't, don't confuse your intermission for your finale. So just don't like think it's your final step. You can always move further. The success of what she's had is because she's explored in agriculture. People tried to change her. She didn't take their words for anything. And the FFA officers, they really stressed back together better than ever. It was really good to be back after COVID hit. It was a really good thing to be back.
I'm Connor Olstead. I am a senior this year. I'm the treasurer of the FFA chapter. So the national chapter award program is designed to recognize chapters that actively implement certain goals and attributes throughout the organization. And out of the 250 chapters in the state of Iowa, we were ranked 25th. So basically, the officer team will have a retreat in the summer sometime, usually late July. But all of our activities that we've had throughout the previous year and to set different goals and how they affected our community, and we write a bunch of different like SA-type questions for it, and then we submit it to the state and will give us a ranking. So we got 25th out of 250. And at the national convention, we got a two-star award and Nick Christiansen went up on stage and received it. Thank you.
I'm going to Indianapolis again. Then we went to the rodeo and we saw bull riding, bareback, and bronc. And there's 300, there's 3,500 people at the rodeo. The final bull riding had two riders from Iowa, which was really cool. And the exciting thing was that they were from Iowa. And we also saw this girl that rode bareback, and she like stood on both courses and rode around. And it was really cool.
Hi, I'm Ellie Vaskey, and I'm a freshman. And I went to the workshop, See It, Solve It, Share It. And they taught us how to see a problem in our community. And then my FFA chapter and I will also solve, solve it and prevent it from happening again. And then I will share with my community to give ideas on how to solve a problem.
For Know Your Worth, we had to split up with different, like people from different places and go around the room. And there was posters that they had listed. And you would, like, there's issues on there about agriculture. And you would discuss it with the people who were at the same, at the same poster you were at. And you'd discuss and see different viewpoints of what they thought from what you thought. And that was it.
So the workshop us four guys went to was called Your Ag Literacy Toolbox. It was all about advocating for agriculture. It was presented by the Farm Bureau. And what they really pushed on was getting involved in your community and putting it out on social media and going to the under schools and trying to get many people involved and interested and educated on agriculture if you could. I'm Nick Christiansen. I'm the sentinel here for chapter and I'm senior.
My name is Jordan Buscher. I'm a senior here at Algonquin High School. Another workshop that we went and attended was tools and tactics to creating a thriving small business. In that workshop, we basically learned about knowing your community, knowing your product, and who to sell to, building up a good network of people who are going to know what you have and are willing to buy. It was a great workshop to learn if you have a small business, maybe you're selling animals or products you make, something. It was great for learning about how to do that. One other tour we went on, it was the last tour we went on before we returned home, was to Hunter's Bee Farm. There we got to learn about bee farming, what they do, all their byproducts they use. They use beeswax for a lot of stuff. Honey was a big one, too. We had a lot of fun going there, learning about all the different things that bees could be used for. A lot of the I didn't know, my mind is just straight to honey, but there's a lot of other uses for bees and their byproducts. We went and got to tour them and got to see some live bees. And Mrs. Becker even got to hold some bees from the hive.
Hello, I'm Lily Esposito. I'm a freshman. And I was able to explore the career fair that was there. And this was a great chance to explore all the different college options that were there. I was able to talk to several colleges and gave, and they gave me their knowledge about what their school had to offer. It was such an amazing experience. And I, it really let me think about the future that I would like to have.
So next year, the 95th National Agriculture Convention will be held in downtown Indianapolis again. It'll be October 26th through the 29th. It should be a really good chance for the students to go back. Some comments that I received about our students while we're out there, tough off rides. Every time they got off the bus, they thanked the bus driver, you know, just for being there, for doing his job. But they were really appreciative of everything that was given to them. Other advisors on our bus noted that. They go, your kids always say it, you know, say thank you. They go, could they talk to our students? I go, it's just the way that they do things. We're really proud of what they do. Doing, being in the right place at the right time. When, you know, there was 50-some thousand other students and adults out there, but they were always where they needed to be, when they needed to be, and going to the workshops. The workshops weren't always easy to get in. We had to get there early for some of them. They reduced the quantity this year and they reduced the number that they allowed in. So they really did well getting in and making it to six different workshops in the two-and-a-half days that we were actually in there. You can bounce this line. One more. Some things that have gone on this year in the last 12 months, starting in April of last year, we really had a chance to start doing things relatively normal again. We attended the Iowa FFA Leadership Conference in April. We had 11 FFA Iowa degree recipients. We have been averaging somewhere between four and six. So that's, that's an incredible number this year. We had a couple of students that took the freshman quiz. Reed Lujie finished sixth in the state. Morgan Kelly was 16th, and that was out of about 270 people that took the freshman quiz. And it's only for ninth grade students. So they did really, really well. We had two events qualify for the state from the sub-district, district, and then the state. We had Ella Lujie who earned a silver, a bronze for her job interview. And then Jordan Buscher earned a silver for his ag broadcasting and did really well with that. Our team ag sales team finished 10th place down there. I suppose there was like 35 teams that took that. And our farm business management team earned a silver. I think there were like 16 out of, again, like 42. So they did really well. We participated in the Cassup County Fair this summer, the Iowa State Fair in August, Clay County Fair in September, all returning back to normal, which is really great. We did the Austin Barrow Show after school started up. We've done, we did district soils and finished second at district. We went to state. And that team finished seventh in the state, which if you knew how close it was, they were five, four points from qualifying for the national event. And so they did really well. The competition was exceedingly tough down there, and they're really great. We've got some leadership conferences coming up in November and January. I don't know that we'll have anybody attend in November, but we're hopeful to have some students attend in January. Then we'll have our winter livestock judging contest, Iowa Port Congress, then we'll be possibly leaving the state again for the Sioux Empire, which is five different breeds. And then the beef box was a possibility. Again, we really don't take for granted of being able to meet in person anymore. We truly appreciate you allowing me to take students out of the school and missing several days at a time. This was four days. I think the critical thinking skills that these students earn while on these trips, their leadership development activities do set them to be above their peers in future. I've talked to students when they've gone off to college and said, you know, I didn't realize how well prepared I was for college until I got there and did some events. And so with that, our last slide says, you know, oh, excuse me, landscaping project, the Gateway Project. We have been landscaping around here, and we got about two-thirds of the way done on last Thursday. We ran out of time. Tomorrow we'll be finishing the project. There's one more slide. And so that's, that's kind of what they looked like there. We will, we'll be finishing the north side. Hopefully they'll get it sited tomorrow before we plant. We'll do the north side of the Gateway entrance, and then we'll do the south, last third on that. And then we'll have it, we'll put some mulch in. Hopefully, if we don't get enough this fall, we'll put it in next spring and get that rest done. Should be one more slide. This is the last that I have for you guys. This, this kind of talks about when the rubber meets the road. These are records the students have put together thus far through 2021. We have 101 projects. That's about 1.2 projects per student. They've journaled almost 7,200 hours thus far this year. The really neat thing is, is the SAE income thus far is about $59,000 that these kids have invested and/or earned. And the economic impact to the community is nearly $62,000, $61,968. So these kids are giving back to the community both in volunteer time as well as earning projects, earning paychecks, unpaid hours. A lot of these students aren't paid at home. They, they get other things from their parents or where they work. So they, they get unpaid hours. And so to have this accumulated and almost 7,200 hours journaled before the end of the year is pretty impressive for these kids. I know we'll exceed next year's, last year's numbers, but I just wanted you guys to have an idea of what sort of benefit these kids are doing as 14- to 18-year-olds. And there are some that will be going for their American degree. Hopefully this, this next year, we've got four or five that are out-of-school members that are on pace to, to earn their American degree, which is the highest one degree that the FFA mistows. What questions do you have for myself or my students?
Why is it Indianapolis every year?
Why is it Indianapolis every year? You know, that's a great question, Dr. Owens. I wish I could tell you that, but it's going to be there for the next 12 years. I think, I think they, they put a bid together. It had been alternating between Louisville and Indianapolis. I really liked Louisville. There's some really great tours down there. But that's where, that's where they bid it. That's where it comes back. Years ago, back in the day, it was down in Kansas City. I think we've outgrown Kansas City, but there's some that wanted to move into like Texas or California. I would not be a fan of that if we reduce the number of students we could take. So.
How many of you guys have done more than one position for someone? How many have done two?
Two.
Three.
Two.
Two.
You've been to Indianapolis every time?
Yes.
Last year, you guys went to the Speedway, right?
Now, this is the first time they've gone to the Speedway. We've gone before, but I try and alternate it up so that way you don't see the same thing every year.
It runs together for me, I guess.
Yeah, it does. I understand.
How many states were represented? All 50?
Yeah, all 50 were there. Yeah. Which was really kind of cool on that first session. Is that where they did the flags? They, they showed the flags of the state. They showed how many chapters they have, how many members they have. And it was, it was kind of cool. There was a few states where we actually had more members than their state did, our chapter alone. We're just kind of, I don't know if that's good or bad, but it kind of probably was kind of interesting. But yeah, all states are represented, including Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, and Washington, D.C.
So how many students ran your program?
How many students are in my program? I see 75 every other day. And I have 92, 93, including out-of-school members that are still active. Either they could pursue their American degree, they're still showing, or something like that.
What sort of SAE projects are there?
SAE projects, there are six different types. They can either have a placement, a, an ownership. They can have a research project. They can have a community service type. We did that a couple of years ago. We had a couple of students that ran a Wheels from the Heartland Packaging Event where we did about 70,000 meals. We packaged out of here. We raised the funds for it and packaged it. And so, and then agro-science research is the other one. So there's some of them, just raise your hands if you have an SAE placement. All right? How many have an ownership of animals? All right? How many do you have basically unpaid time? So it's all over the board with these kids. And the record keeping is really important to me because that's one of those employability skills that they can take with them down the road and keep better track of their records for taxes purposes, for banking purposes, and just knowing where they are in life.
Thank you guys for joining us. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
All right. Well, we'll kind of move on then. Our next item on the agenda is the consent items. You should have received those in your packet. Jay, did you get a chance to look at invoices?
Yes.
All good, I assume?
Yes.
In order? All right, good. Any questions?
There was one check that didn't make it onto the list, which was for Mason City School for the EduCare program. And that was $157.76.
I had a question on the, an invoice from Ingenuity for a virtual tour.
Yep.
Of that program.
Ingenuity is the program we use in our TNT program and in our At-Risk program. Mr. Cecil, that might be a good, good one for you. Is it anything more to that?
It's, it is. The software program was used for At-Risk.
Okay.
At-Risk last year. So if you stuff in-house, we used stuff last year. It's all over the country.
Good question. Any other questions? If not, we need a motion then to approve consent items.
Do a motion to approve the consent items.
Thank you. Tom, do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Here we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next is our superintendent report, but you can wait.
We can just do it. We'll do it this way.
Okay. We'll go superintendent's report.
You know, starting with certified enrollment. Certified enrollment is, October 1st is our count day, but you actually certify on October 15th. And I think we talked during the October board meeting. There's some cleanup that goes on in those two weeks where students might be duplicated from one district to, to another. And Mary Beth works hard and gets all those to where they are here. So our certified enrollment, actually a typo there, our certified enrollment is up to 19. Our resident students attending our school is up 31. Our certified, our actual enrollment's up, up 19. And then our total school-aged kids is up 46. You know, a lot of different numbers. This 19, being up 19, that's the one that we're funded on. That's our per pupil funding. So that's, that's, that's great. That's as good as we can, you know, we can ever hope for. You know, we, we talk in a, in a rural district, if we don't decline, that's, that's a positive for us, and this is beyond that. I presented this to our advisory council two weeks ago, and they asked where, you know, why is it up? And that's a really good question. And we, we take a look administratively at our, at our buildings and our grade levels, where it is. And it's, we had 43 students in the middle school who, who were new to the district. So that's, that's a lot of it. Our preschool, you can see, is up three. That's actually six kids because preschool are funded at half. So preschool was up slightly. We did have a, you know, our graduating class was slightly under 100, I think, last year. You know, so what we have in kindergarten is similar to that. So it's, it's kind of a push as kids coming in and kids going out. We just had an influx of people into the district. Our open enroll in is up 18. You can see that. And our open enroll out is down, you know, which we, we count that as a net gain as well when you're looking at enrollment. So all those together resulted in a very, very positive certified enrollment for us, which is, this creates our funding for next year, these numbers here. I put in there just a little bit of Iowa State General Fund and how that affects education, some of that information. The, the state of Iowa had a $1.2 billion surplus, which was higher than what the, the estimate was going to be. That surplus goes a number of different places, including into some cash reserves, into some taxpayer relief. But then there's still another 200 million in surplus that goes to the state general fund, which is how we're funded in education. The pandemic impact on SSA last year, you know, we had less, we had less kids attending schools last year, around 6,000 less. How does that impact us now? Is those kids are going to come back. So it, we have to pay, you know, the, the money towards education's going to go up just simply because there's more students to really get us back to zero. So in a year where we have a surplus, it's probably a good thing because there, it is going to cost more to educate at the same level than it did the previous year. And that's before we start to talk about an SSA increase. So that'll be something for us to continue to talk with our legislators about. And they know that. They know that. That's, that's part of why they were conservative last year. Talk a little bit about that 250 million is what some people are estimating to get us back to zero. You know, certainly we want an SSA around, you know, 3% or more. We've been 2%, 3% last year, about an average of 2% for the last 10 years in the state of Iowa. Little bit of a financial review, and I'm going to use this spreadsheet a little bit to, you know, talk about some of these things, you know, with you guys. This is looking, you know, not only back at last year, but also a forecast into our, you know, the next five years. You know, big thing here, right here on this line, this is our surplus and deficit for the year. So FY 19, 20, and 21, we operated with a surplus, which, which is great. Three years in a row, we've done that. There, there were adjustments made in our, in our expenditures, different things that we did to help that. You can see we were operating with a small deficit prior to that. We are anticipating a surplus at the end of this year. You can see that number's really big. And that's because of the ESAR funds that we're going to spend over a two-year time period. Well, those, those funds are, are built into our model already. We don't actually have the dollars, but they are built into our, our model already. So even though this is a really big number for a surplus, we are going to spend that. So that, that goes down. So as we move ahead and we look at our projections, so this is going for this year's budget year out to FY 27. Couple of things for us to, to look at in here is that this surplus goes, goes down. The ESAR dollars get spent out. This is also a large surplus, but we don't have all of our ESAR funds, the 1.4 million budgeted yet. So some of that will decrease with, with those funds. So if you look at the, the change FY 23, so this is next school year, our revenue is expected to be about 19.1, and then it goes down to 18.8. Part of the, you know, what, what starts to happen is we don't have the ESAR dollars anymore. Also, what starts to happen is in our models, we've taken out the cash reserve.
Can you explain what ESAR dollars are? Can you explain what ESAR dollars are, where they're coming from?
Yep. ESAR dollars, the emergency secondary school relief, it's, it's the COVID dollars that come from the federal government. Those dollars are all given to the state, and then the state sends those to the school. We get that in reimbursement form. We don't, we didn't have $1.4 million sent to us in cash. So Mary Beth, every quarter, goes in and claims those dollars for interventionists at Bertha Godfrey, interventionists at Bryan Elementary, interventionists at Lucia Wallace, our mental health therapist, our youth, you know, all those positions we added with those, with those dollars, as well as there's some curriculum additions as well. So those are federal dollars that we have that have to be spent in a two-year time period. This is year one. Next year is year two. That's a good question. So our revenue does drop, like we said, after FY 23. That's when we'll not have ESAR dollars. Our, our revenue drops again from FY 24 to FY 25. That's when we no longer receive sharing dollars from Luverne. Okay? So these are, these are expected drops in revenue. You know, so we, we see these coming. We know it's going to happen. We want to show you what the model looks like. So we've had our ESAR dollars come out. We took our cash reserve tax, which is about 900,000. I took all of that out in the model, and we took our sharing dollars out.
Sorry, is that the employment?
Yep, joint employment.
Isn't there incentive after you?
They are, but, but I, I don't build those in until we, until we get to that point.
Gotcha.
So we receive .10 times our certified enrollment minus special education, which it's about $700,000 is what it is. So we'll receive that for, for three years. If you reorganize, we will receive it for three additional years. But I don't have that built into the model. So what does that do? So this is an SSA increase of, of 2%. Taxable valuation change of 3%. Keeping the same special education deficit at 800,000, although we actually operated less than that. So, you know, really, we're although we actually operated less than that. So, you know, really, we're, we're very aggressive in our expenditures and conservative in our revenues in these models. And what it does is our, our fund balance, you know, actually grows from this year to five years from now. Now, you can see that we do operate at a deficit here, three years in a row, um, but, but we should. You know, that's okay. That's an okay thing. We have the fund to do that at that time. So that's a healthy thing that that's happening.
And that will cut into our spending authority?
Uh, it will. Cut into our spending authority. It'll cut into our, our fund balances and our, our UAB, but it's, we have the balance to do that, so that should happen. So we have the money to spend. We should spend it. And then, you know, it will need to balance ourselves once again. So I talked about those assumptions. Um, we, we build all those assumptions in, like I said, a 2% SSA. And we, we hope our, it's higher than that, okay? But we don't know. Um, enrollment-wise, not increasing, not decreasing either, but not increasing, keeping it flat. Uh, the same special education, um, the addition of a, a possible administrator, um, those, those teachers that we've added with ESER money, taking those, those teachers out. Uh, benefits increasing at 5% per year. We hope that doesn't happen. And salary increases 2% per year is what has built this model. Factors that are not included, Todd brought up one, um, continued sharing dollars. And then also, uh, reorganization, which adds per pupil. Those, those per pupil dollars aren't in this as well. So there's a couple different measurables that we, we think we see, but we don't add them in until they happen. And we're, and we're very balanced with those assumptions. Any questions on some of those finances and those numbers? It's, it's important, I think, that, um, you know, I, I want you guys to look into the future with me. I, I want to give you the, you guys the numbers, um, of the outlook of our district financially as well as where we are currently. Things look very, very good. Uh, increased enrollment this year certainly helps that. Um, and we're, we're very stable, and that, that's a good thing.
So, and I know, I know we don't have certain things built in here, right? Fair enough. If you look at 25, then we're starting to see a deficit, right?
Yep. Uh, operating in a deficit on that year, yep.
Yeah, from between our revenue and expenditures, right?
Yep.
That apparently continues to kind of carry on and grow.
Correct.
Looks like. So let's say, you know, the things don't come to fruition, and this is our reality.
Sure.
I'm assuming then we have to start making, we're having some conversations about how we.
Yeah, we would not need to, we would not need to change expenditures. We would change revenues. Uh, I took all of the cash reserve out after 2023. Um, that's, that's revenues we have in right now. We have to take it out because we're too solvent. So as you take away this fund balance, you could, you could have that cash back in. To answer, I think that's where you're, where you're getting to.
Okay.
How do we balance this thing back out?
Right.
The simple thing is put the cash reserve back in. That's one way to do it. I know that would be increasing revenues. Another way would be to decrease expenditures. Um, you could do that in some ways.
That's tough though.
Yeah, that's tough. Maybe retirement does some of those things naturally for us. So there's a couple of different methods for us to, once again, balance that. You would not need to make any adjustments until after FY 27, though. And I would say maybe even a year or so beyond that. So we, we're looking a long time before we'd need to make an adjustment from our current expenditures.
So where do we take the, the money? We take that in cash? Where's that going? Or are we going to reduce the tax rate?
Yeah, it's a good question, Jay. Uh, for this, I haven't done that. I just have simply taken it out. Um, I would say probably immediately into management. Uh, we spend 100% of our management every year. Um, so making that a safer place to prepare for an early retirement, you know, that, that's one place. There's probably some other, um, ways we could look at it or release, relief, uh, taxpayer relief and, you know, lower tax rates.
It's still a very healthy, when you think about it, 28 to 27% fund balance. And the five-year projection is still very healthy.
Yep.
So there's no immediate concern, and the overspending is not multiplying. It's a one-year overspending, the next year overspending about the same number of dollars.
Right.
So it's not an emergency right now. It's strictly.
So this, this number right here is what Tom's looking at. So when we're predicting we're going to end the year at 28% in our, um, you know, as, as our UAB, and in five years from now, it'll be 27. So we're really, we're not losing anything.
That's good.
And, and you're, you're right. Typically, what happens when you're in bad shape is this 300 is 600 here, and 1.2, and then we have big problems. And we don't have that happening.
I appreciate the transparency as we continue to work through it. And it's, it looks like we're headed in the right direction. We'll continue to monitor.
Uh, last thing in our, our report today, um, we had a biology field day a couple of weeks ago that Todd had the opportunity to attend, and Todd's going to talk a little bit about that, that day.
Well, I just wanted to, uh, had the opportunity to chaperone, uh, biology field day held out at Wild Haven, um, just down by the swimming pool. And I wanted to take, uh, just a minute to kind of recognize a few people publicly, um, for this event. Cause, uh, first of all, Mr. Young is a biology teacher that I went to high school, and then Mr. Bowey. It's a collaboration, as, as at Bishop Gare, it's kind of a collaboration between the two school districts. And, um, we started out the day with a presentation from the National Eagle Center, and, uh, it was very interesting. Then we went around to some different stations, very, uh, hands-on, interactive stations. And, um, for instance, one, uh, former Algonah High graduate, TJ Herrick, gave a presentation about chronic wasting disease. Um, and he actually had deer heads there, and the kids helped him, I think, dissect some glands or something. You know, he demonstrated how they test for this and stuff. I thought a lot of, a lot of kids would be turned around, but they, they were all very attentive and attentive. And then, uh, they had the naturalist from the Mitchell County Conservation give a presentation about wild edibles. I didn't know that itchweed is, can be eaten as a lettuce salad. Um, and she talked about some fungus. One of them was, which is, I think, chicken of the woods. And lo and behold, a couple of weeks after this, I'd never heard of chicken of the woods. I went to an Isaac Walton potluck, and Ron Beatty had cooked chicken of the woods. So I was able to eat some chicken of the woods. So it, uh, you know, just a lot of really good, um, interactive stations that, that the kids went to. And then a couple, um, I want to recognize Smithfield Foods. Uh, they, they provided the staff to cook, and then they provided our, our meal for the day. They, uh, cooked some pork loin, and it was awesome. And, uh, then the rest was, I think a lot of it was catered by Hy-Vee, but a very good meal. But thanks to Smithfield Foods for that. And last but not least, I want to recognize Donald Teet's, um, foundation. Uh, they kind of spearheaded this thing. And, and I had a conver, an opportunity to speak with Don a little bit, and, you know, and a couple of board members about, you know, they've got the pieces in place here that, for this foundation is going to have a lasting impact in this community for a long, long time. And so I just wanted to, thanks for a minute, just to recognize, uh, a couple of our area, you know, community teachers and, uh, a couple of the businesses and, and, and people in town, so.
Wonderful event. I got to attend a couple of years ago. Mrs. Eishen got to go this year. Wonderful event. Fabulous opportunity for our kids, and, uh, we're really lucky that we have that collaboration with, with them.
Okay. Um, anything else after the report?
Nope.
Any other questions? All right. We'll move on to administrative report, and we have Mr. Cecil with us here tonight. Talk to us a little about high school professional development.
Absolutely. Yeah. Excuse me. Um, we appreciate the ability to have professional development. A shift in our calendar this year as we've gone to, uh, back, probably to an old model, um, of full-day professional development. I would say staff and student feedback for full day versus our early outs has been overwhelmingly popular. Um, it provides a more consistent schedule in our, in our weeks with the students. Uh, certainly provides an ability to get a little deeper into some things. We put in, put a full day, uh, on those topics. We have three major, uh, major areas of focus this year. The first one is tier-one instruction. So in education, a lot of times, tier-one, tier-two, tier-three, if you picture a pyramid. You know, tier-one instruction is really effective for, uh, 80% of our students. When that isn't working, we need a little more intense instruction. That would be our tier-two, and then, and then higher up to, to tier-three. So tier-one is really foundational, uh, instruction, but it's, it's never out of style. It's never out of need for repair. It is the, the basic items. Um, some topics we hit on, and, and Janie Eishen, our director of teaching and learning, and Kayla Jacobson, our high school structural coach, have led kind of that segment of it. Um, but really at the beginning, middle, and end of any class, which doesn't sound overly complicated. Uh, all brain research does says we remember the most about the beginning, and the second most about the end, uh, and then the third most about everything in between. Uh, so really working on those integral pieces to be powerful and impactful, to start making the connections. Again, we're talking about teenage brains that aren't developed yet, so trying to, to ignite that. Same thing with, uh, ending. It's got some optimal closure we talked about. But then in the middle, keeping it engaging. Um, recent study on, on attention span is that, uh, as humans, we're down to about eight seconds. Um, and some studies on attention span. So really trying to keep things active. For point of reference, Goldfish, 97% attention span. I don't know how they test that, but that's, that's some bleeding research out there. Um, so really working on, on keeping the attention. We know our kids live in a different world than, than we grew up in. We know how many times they can swipe their phone in a minute. Uh, so trying to, to keep our classrooms engaging at tier-one instruction, for, for. Uh, and then some specifics on the pacing and planning for block schedule. Uh, what's good in 40 minutes is good in 80 minutes and, and vice versa. Uh, but a little more, maybe some planning pieces, like I said, pacing. So that was our first one. Uh, our second item is restorative mindset. This is some work we've been doing for a few years now. Uh, Maria Lance is one of our, our people we partner with, and she brings in a lot of instruction on, on restorative practices, of course. And we also have two restorative leads this year at the high school. Part of the TLC pack, which also, uh, Ben Keeker and Andy Spear. Uh, they've done a nice job taking some of the items that Maria, uh, brings to us on some of those full-day PDs, and then distributing it out in our advisory, uh, program. It is, uh, a lot of relationship work, and it is important work in there. Uh, and it's also a shift. So when we talk restorative mindset, it's a shift from punitive to discipline, um, to a more restorative discipline on the, on the other end of it. Um, and I, I'd like to talk about it because I do get pushback. I get pushback from, from staff. I get pushback from parents. I had a parent the other day say, uh, they wish when their kid came to school, we would take all 450 cell phones away from their kids. Uh, I jokingly said, well, I wish as parents you could keep those all at home on your own, on your own time. Uh, but we do want to use them for, for good, of course. So we like that they're here. We better try and teach them how to be very responsible with it. But, uh, in that pushback, when I hear things like, what was good enough for us, or what didn't this work when I was a kid? Uh, and, and sure, plenty of it did. Uh, rotary phones, it worked. My home phone number ended in a zero, and I think I messed up the zero the most times. If you feel the pain of messing up the zero, you always go all the way around. Uh, flip phones also worked, and those are now not, uh, reality. So the whole, it worked and wasn't good enough, um, there's a lot of things and a lot of examples in, in all, in modern business area that, that it worked once upon a time. Bottom line, we know more about how students learn than we do before. And we talk often that if we know better, then we ought to do better. Um, not just, not just opinions. We've worked some data into these conversations, um, conditions for learning. It's a survey we take each year. So pulled a couple of things specifically from there to check and see how this restorative mindset and restorative practices, um, resonate with our, our students. Uh, because we know that when things are different and we don't understand something, we often judge it. I don't know about you guys, but if I don't know something or understand it, and I judge it, I usually don't judge it positively to start with. Right? It's new. I, I don't get it. Kids have 12 different social media platforms. I judge that as negative, and then one of them shows me how, how good it, it can be. And so, uh, I think about that. I get some feedback again that our restorative work, uh, misunderstandings may be too flexible, too inconsistent, or, or worse than that yet. Um, there's no consequences. What that really translates to is no consequences that we relate to from our days of high school. Uh, I look at every other area of how we do high school, and I'm glad that it's not the same high school that, that I attended. Uh, I'm glad that we make some of those advances. Um, but two of the survey questions, our students were asked this question. Our school has a clear set of rules and expectations. Um, so trying to think how students see this, how they perceive it. Uh, they got the choices of strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly disagree. So in essence, two of the answers, positive. Uh, two of the answers may be negative. So our school has a clear set of rules and expectations. Uh, and given that this survey last year, 97% of our students either agreed or said strongly agreed. Uh, and I don't know what exactly I was expecting from that staff, but I, I don't know if it was realistic to have more than 97% of our students feel like very clear they know what the rules are and what's expected. Um, the second one we've all been talking about this was teachers and administrators consistently enforce the rules at school. Same categories are strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly disagree. Uh, this one came in right about 90% of strongly agree, uh, or agree. And again, I have three of my own children. If I gave them that survey at home and dad enforces rules consistently, I would never get to 90% of my, for me surveyed at home. So, uh, we know that kids don't always feel that way. So we look at that, and again, it's, it's one piece of that on one, on one given day. We do have a survey of our own that aligns with plenty of that, but, but in the, in some of the misconceptions, I'd like to point out that, that when we ask the kids, they, they do know what those things are and how it applies. Um, and our third area is staff self-care. Um, certainly a, a new area to spend some time focusing on. We partnered with Tina Bogren. Uh, she's an author and speaker. We've had two Zoom sessions so far. Uh, she's written a book that we, excuse me, we are studying right now. It's 180 Days of Self-Care. Uh, she has another one with Tim Cantle that just, just came out. Uh, again, taking care of, of the individual so we can take, take care of others. Uh, I was talking to, with Dr. Owen. The wall has a 30-day challenge on it. That was an item that came from her to our staff. Our staff asked a lot of our students. So picking a healthy habit and, and 30 days of improvement in your life. Uh, last couple of years, we, we've done a lot of work with, with trauma and with anxiety within our students. A couple of book studies, Washington was a leader, learners, and then relationship responsibility regulation. Uh, and this year added that same component because our, our adults in our building, um, they have the same trauma, the same anxiety experiences. Um, you know, the last year, and we talk about this probably too often, but I, I know coming into this year, I, I had that false sense that this year was going to be a piece of cake compared to last year. We weren't worried about mandates. We weren't worried about contact tracing in the same ways. And it seemed like some of that cloud had lifted. But I think what we found across the board, every administrator I've talked to in other districts, um, we kind of have a pandemic following the pandemic. Uh, we started to talk earlier about some lost learning, some kids not in, in schools, and, and those are coming back in. Uh, but anxiety is at a, a different level. And I thought it was going to be normal. My reality is for the teenagers is not ever normal. Uh, but we've come back in, in a different place in our lives. And our kids, I think sometimes they take a bad, bad rap. We probably all said it. We've all heard it. Kids these days, uh, I, a lot of times, like our kids reflect society. We just get to see it firsthand. So we're working through some of those behaviors, and behaviors aren't always, uh, uh, negative. Last thing on, on anxiety, some research done during closure time. The number one item that reduces anxiety is predictability. If you go through the last 18 months in your history, predictability has been a word that anybody's used for a while. Uh, so we, we continually battle that. Again, our staff are in those same, those same elements. We know we have to devote that. We want our staff to be the best version of themselves. The best summary I could use, and I, I hear this a lot now in the circles I'm in, the flight attendant gives that message when we board in the air. when you're boarding the airplane, you're sitting there, you're waiting. They talk about it. Your cabin loses pressure, oxygen masks will deploy, and their next message is, put your own on first before you put anybody else's on. And so I feel very good about taking a chunk of our time for that with our staff. I believe if there were a plane of trouble, the educators would save a lot of other people on the plane. I'm not so sure how many people would save themselves. So it's really good for our staff to be focused on some of that. Probably the last reality back where I started, I know that when we have a day of service, we displace about fifteen hundred kids into our community, to our homes. And we don't take that lightly. I feel very blessed that we have those days. I would always take more training and more learning with our staff. But I think those three right now certainly providing us with a great impact to service students that we carry. Questions about those three initiatives that we're working on this year?
I think you've talked about it pretty in-depth. We appreciate that. But same as you said, I've heard nothing but positive about the full-day professional developments.
Yeah.
In every building that I've been in. So not only high schools. So it seems like it has been a positive step for us.
We followed up with surveys a little bit, maybe across the district, and now our high school, one each.
I've shared some of that data with you guys and some of the memos. So we want to know. We changed things. We want to know, is it working? And initial thoughts from our staff, it's working. It's working really well. And it's making a difference for our staff, which makes a difference for our kids, so. Anything else for Jared?
Well, thank you, Jared. Thanks for taking your time tonight to...
Absolutely.
...complications. We appreciate it. So we've had a great start to the meeting, I think. We've had a lot of great communications to the board with everything going on. Now we get to kind of move into what we do, just go through our... So we'll start with SBRC application.
Yeah, this application allows us to see, receive one-time funding, budget adjustments for like certified enrollment increases, and also open enrollment out. So what we're doing here is requesting spending authority. You know, so for example, you know, our enrollment this October is more than last year, you know, but we don't have that money. So we can request that authority from the SBRC. Same thing if we had more kids open enroll out, we could request that authority. We don't have that, so that doesn't appear. So the maximum amount we can request for our enrollment increase is authority of one hundred and twenty-three thousand. We don't have anything that we can request for open enrollment out discrepancy. And then our ELL funding of three thousand. So this is something we typically do in November. Where these numbers lie is always different. If you don't have enrollment increase, you don't have anything here. Last year, we had more in the open enrollment out. So, but this allows us the spending authority in the year for those dollars.
Annual standard practice.
Annual standard practice, exactly right, Jay.
Just need a motion then to approve the SBRC application.
So moved.
Thank you. Andrew, do you have a second?
Second.
Gloria, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Modification to our cafeteria plan.
Yeah, this is, our cafeteria plan may allow up to five thousand of unused amounts in a participant's health FSA, their flex spending account at the end of the year to be carried over to pay, to reimburse, you know, medical care expenses that occurred in the following year. This is an IRS plan change that isn't our current practice. Previously, you couldn't carry that money over. So with that IRS change, we just need to modify our plan to allow our people to do that.
Is it five hundred or five thousand?
Five hundred.
Okay.
I make a motion to modify our cafeteria plan.
Good idea. Second. We have a motion by Andrea, a second by Jay. All right, any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looks like we are looking at another out-of-state trip later on.
Yeah, I linked the itinerary in your pack. The band and choir taking a joint trip to Chicago, Illinois. They'll engage in highlights that Chicago can provide, including a show. They go and have deep-dish pizza, different cultural events. The out-of-state trip is from April twenty-eighth to May first. The travel accommodations are being arranged with Bob Rogers Travel, who is someone we've used many times before to schedule some of these trips. So this is a, not a final, but a draft itinerary for our kids. And we would need a motion to approve the out-of-state trip.
So moved. All right, we have Todd, a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea. We have a motion and a second to approve the out-of-state trip to Chicago for the band and chorus. I like the fact that they also get to kind of work with the colleagues there.
Yeah, right. Sure.
I might go.
I think that's a key part of the trip. I mean, I know the cultural part, but it is a performing organization, and to receive excellent help from another professional, yeah, very much worthwhile.
It's a great experience.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A girls' basketball fundraiser.
Another fundraiser. We had one last month. Different group. The high school girls' basketball team is requesting to sell gourmet popcorn. They'll use the proceeds for equipment, training needs. They didn't have any dollars in their account. So these will be used towards the entire girls' basketball program, seventh through twelfth, not just high school, but seventh through twelfth.
Are all fundraisers approved or more?
Depends on the amount. Over twenty-five hundred are approved by the board.
Do they estimate that it's going to be margin?
I was a good surprise by how much they believe they're going to gourmet popcorn.
Yeah. And they make those estimates based on, they got forty-five students, how many they hope that each sell. So it certainly is an estimate of the proceeds.
All right, do we have a motion to approve? So moved. All right, thank you, Jay. Do you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second to approve the girls' basketball fundraisers. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the AEA board election.
Our school district needs to cast a ballot for our representation on the Prairie Lakes AEA board. There is only one candidate who has filled the statement of candidacy by October fifteenth, and that is Sue Brown, the incumbent. And she, again, is running again. So we just need a motion to fill out the ballot for Mrs. Sue Brown.
Have you heard at all?
Absolutely. Yeah, I've worked with her for many years. She's retired special education teacher from the community. Wonderful person to represent us on the AEA board.
All right, do we have a motion then to approve Sue, or a motion to put Sue Brown on the ballot for us?
I will make the motion to approve Sue Brown for the AEA board election.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Gloria. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Extend the whole grade sharing.
The whole grade sharing agreement that we currently have with Laverne is, will expire at the end of this school year. So what we would like to do is just simply change what's in red on this to include the two thousand twenty-two and the two thousand twenty-three school year, and then to terminate on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The financial agreement for the additional year will stay the same as it currently is, which is us receiving seventy-five percent of the funding for the sixth through twelfth grade students from Laverne who come to the Algonah School.
Is that seventy-five percent? Is that pretty typical, or is that kind of something negotiated between the three districts?
Both. It's pretty typical that you arrive there. We didn't start at seventy-five percent, which is also typical. You build up to it. And then, you know, yes, very, very typical.
How many students is that in sixth through twelfth?
That was on the...
Fifty, isn't it?
Whole grade share in is fifty, is fifty this year, fifty-two last year.
All right, any further discussion? So moved. Okay, Jay, we got a motion to approve to extend the whole grade sharing. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Todd, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the three-year AHTA inspection contractor, maybe there's different ways.
Yep. No, that's correct. And what this is, is our proposal to perform our asbestos reinspection services for our district. That's something that we have to have done. The district has operated under a three-year contract in the past. These inspections are required by the EPA, and this company has done this for us in the past. So this is a three-year contract in the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred dollars. I do recommend this proposal.
All right, need a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve that proposal.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're looking to approve a platform and a liftgate for a utility truck.
We currently have a nineteen-seventy-seven Chevrolet truck that we use as our utility truck with the, got racks and flatbed on the back, that I am told we purchased new in nineteen-seventy-seven. So we have got our money's worth out of that truck. It's wore out. We continue to have to put money into that, which, that's just not feasible to continue to repair and use it. We do need that type of vehicle. It's used frequently by our outdoor crew to haul things. It also has a lift on it, which we need. What we would like to do is purchase an aluminum platform and a liftgate to be installed on one of our current trucks, one of our older trucks, to just take the need, take the place of the one that we currently have. This purchase would be out of PEPAL expenses. Our total purchase is, I think it's thirteen, around thirteen thousand between the two. Also, part of that is a spreader that we would use to spread salt and sand at the back of that truck.
Did we just approve to replace the seventy-seven a few months ago? Was that a totally different?
Different. No, we aren't replacing it. We're taking one of the current trucks we have and just...
And just putting new equipment on that?
Yep, to fill the need.
So we're keeping the truck yet?
Uh, no, we will not be keeping the truck. I don't think it's running right now. It's day-to-day.
It's up to the audit.
Yeah.
It blocks the gate for the football games.
The floorboard's not completely there anywhere, so it's getting to be the time of year where you don't want to use it.
I make a motion to approve the personal platform liftgate.
And spreader.
All right, thanks, Todd. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
All right, thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Open enrollment.
We have five students open enrolling. First one is from the North Union District to Algonah. And then we have four siblings who lived in the Emmitsburg District and moved out of the district but wants to continue to attend school in the district. So that's one of those that we do have to approve. So I do recommend all five of these applications.
So moved. Thanks, Jay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea. Motion and a second for the open enrollment request. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New contracts.
New contracts. We have Sandra Verhuest in food service. This would be at the high school, twenty hours a week, eleven dollars per hour. Diana Burbach, food service at Lucia Wallace. That'd be full-time, thirty-five hours per week at the same rate. Becky Bibbler, if you remember, we had a special education teacher at the elementary take an administrative job at another district at the end of the summer. And we didn't, we weren't able to fill that. So we've been operating without that teacher. And we have it posted to hire. But Becky Bibbler is willing to come in three hours a day to help us with some of that need. Also Dana Carroll, teacher associate at the middle school. Chris Kaler is a high school custodian who works for us currently. He's been working twenty-seven, twenty-eight hours. We are moving one of our full-time high school custodians, who's at forty hours plus overtime, forty-five hours down to thirty. So we have fifteen hours there that we need to cover. Like to move Chris up to forty hours to cover that, which would make him full-time.
We're still looking to hire one more.
Yeah, and we still have an opening. We still have an opening from a resignation last month or the month before.
Make a motion to revolve the contracts.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Gloria. Motion and a second to approve the new contracts. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resignations.
Resignations this month, we have Tina Jones from food service, Michelle Parsons from food service, Melissa Berkey from assistant volleyball, pending suitable replacement, Rebecca West from color guard, Kayden Wadley from assistant football, pending suitable replacement, and Heidi Schnackenberg from teacher associate in the middle school.
So moved. Thanks, Jay. Do you have a second?
Second, the motion.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second to approve the resignations. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next what we need is a motion for adjournment. You say, Jared? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned.